Recording in progress.
Okay, we will call the meeting to order at seven oh four. And we'll do the play.
Oh, sorry.
You're okay?
All choked up, mixing that character. Minutes.
They looked good to me. Thank you, Tina.
Make motion that we three minutes.
That's good.
What was that?
Tina, yeah.
No, it was repeat.
Yeah.
So weird. Well, you'll see if that keeps going now. Yeah, there's these other.
Did you have a bid coming in? Right, right. Oh, okay. Okay. I have one bid for the off-road file contract. And two.
Do you want a slicer?
Yes.
He's got his good slicer.
Too good of a slicer. Too good of him.
Oh, we got another one. This is for off-road or Moeing?
Moeing.
Oh, very good.
Okay.
Kind of entered.
Is that on the assignments?
Yes.
Okay, this is John Courier. I guess we're gonna have to do it.
John Courier is the first one?
John Courier. Off-road. And it is for. Fourteen thousand five hundred for each of the next three years. So I would make a motion to accept his contract. Three zero.
No option. No option for increase?
Nope, they're all the same, three years.
Thank you.
Oh, no. You have bid? Oh, already with it. Oh, already here. Oh, okay.
Okay, okay. Great, that's that.
And this is the raking and mowing?
Yeah.
They kick in.
Uh, this one is, yeah.
Oh, wait, are we gonna do all of them at the same time? Are you gonna do all the off-road at once and then all the?
Off-road are all done.
That was the only one. That was the only one.
Okay.
So next, next category. We're on the, yeah, category two. Yeah.
Okay. Justin, right? Okay, Justin has a. Um, for thirty thousand.
What's the name of the company or the?
Black Bear Lawn Care. And that's for three years?
I didn't, I didn't know which you guys wanted, so, okay, that's for either. Okay.
Russell Webb. Hey, yeah. I think. This is about thirty-two thousand. For three years. Each. So I would put this one like the lowest.
And what? And Justin, say, you, this thirty seem reasonable for, for three years, or you just wanna make sure?
So what I'll have you do is stop in for the office sometime and sign one of these contracts.
Yeah, I have one right here.
Oh, okay.
I have one right on it. I just, usually when I do a bid, for like my McDonald's that I take care of and stuff, I do it on an invoice sheet. Depending how much I'll do it for, and then they will accept their device.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I have no problem signing.
Okay.
You don't have any percent? I'm sorry.
Thirty thousand.
Should we make a, should we make a motion?
Yeah.
Before you sign it, Bob?
I move that we accept this is. A bid for thirty thousand dollars for three years.
I'm sorry, can we make it a little bit more official and say Black Bear Lawn Care?
Justin Tibbetts, uh, under the. Black Bear Lawn Care. Yep.
Thank you.
Beautiful second. All, all in favor of you?
Keep that in the file, too.
Beautiful. Okay. Now we're good.
If you guys have any questions.
Yeah.
As to how I run my operations and stuff, feel free to ask.
Yeah, if you have any, let me know.
My grandfather took care of it for quite a few years, and I know all of the same.
Thank you so much for bidding. It's been good to have you.
I'm welcome.
Have you onboard.
The only question I do have is, it pertains to the bond. My insurance company is already on, getting on top of that.
Yep.
Um, can we include the cost of the bond to that each year? Because I think it's gonna be around five hundred dollars is the cost of the bond. What do you guys think about that?
Well, that's up to you. That would be within the thirty thousand.
Okay, so take it out of the thirty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that bonding just for this particular contract?
Just for this only, I mean, it's the only one that requires me to have it.
I got it.
All the other ones just require a million, which I have insurance as well, so it's a, it's a million dollar liability.
Right. Which is on top of that, so he has to have that plus the bank.
Right, immersed.
Decided.
Yeah, he was just trying to find something, so they didn't need anything. Et cetera.
Or do you want me to just put it on there?
Just put it on here.
Wait, not here, it's right there.
Just something for him to write on. It's been a long day, I know.
Oh, it's been a long weekend, the snow is, yeah.
Oh, my goodness. We got rain, so now we're gonna.
Freezing rain tomorrow?
Oh, is that?
Freezing grizzle?
Oh, no.
But all of our wells are cold?
That's true.
That's for sure.
I did have, I have someone who their well runs out every year because it's been so dry. This year, I hope it's, I'm crossing my finger for her.
That's our silver lining. Um, quick side note, it's very pretty.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, part of the day tomorrow is gonna be fairly nice.
Well, I have to call Bill. Yep, Bill's calling me. He's back home.
You can do it.
Just to let you know.
Yep.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Like I said, any questions, anything, feel free to call me. I'm happy to go through the business and stuff. Okay? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray. Ray, if you wanna go, you can.
Yeah, I mean, you know why I'm here?
Yep.
I need that road, I mean, it needs to be open.
Rayland's on the North Taylor Road.
Yeah, and for some reason, this last snowstorm, it was burned up where. Uh, no one can get beyond my property through the next property. The guy's just left this weekend, last weekend before the storm. So he's up here, I mean, now we can't get to his property. You all say it's a closed road. I understand that, but, you know, in order to close the road, it needs to be not maintained for twenty years, is that correct?
Yep.
But Lee Dunn was down there directing Peter Querry and Company to put the rip wrap so they can get the, get the logs out. So he spent time, he had a company truck, it was during the day, but it was on government, I mean, town time. So there wasn't that time spent on that road. Not, not, number, reason number two, the fire department needs to get to that home. They have two large propane tanks outside, has electricity. I mean, they need to have a place, you know, they need to get to. Third reason. Right? The town has given CMP an easement. If a tree goes down beyond the burn, okay, I ain't gonna get power back, nor the whole road. We're not gonna get power back until. Just spring, until that burn decides to melt. CMP is gonna look at it and say, see you later. I mean, we all been there. I mean, my God, they had, I mean, Lee Dunn made me move the pole twenty-three inches. That set me back four weeks with CMP. So, I mean, you all have to thought, I mean, and think about the progression, where this town is gonna go. Um, Fred Weber was allowed to subdivide his land down there.
Yep.
Okay, so that is potential growth that he wants to go. Okay, we're not talking four miles, we're talking a hundred feet. And why all of a sudden this storm, he decides to burn it up? I think it's retaliation, because I complained about. The last snowstorm he made was just one pass through, and it's not the first time he's done that to me. And it wasn't because of the road, the, the pile trucks would stop, or whatever the case may be. He's done it before to me, my complaint. That he's done that to me before. Now he burns it up. Where all the water now, my land is wet, it's even gonna get wet. Okay, don't need it. Okay? I don't want my property to burn up because of the ashes are flying, because a fire, they can't get to. The, the town has got a belly up to this. The road don't need improvement, it just need not to be burned up. All I'm asking, the CMP can get through.
What he's saying is, when Lee plowed up. The point where his property ends and.
No, I thought it would be on that, but it's.
Yeah, his driveway is. The, officially, the town ends at that point. The town. Um, winter maintenance, I mean, any maintenance on that road stops at his property. So, in this particular case, what he, Lee was doing was, he was plowing and trying to stay out. From getting onto the edges of the roads, because he was, he was just messing roads all up. Uh, and he did. He, he plowed up to his driveway and then just.
Burned it up, where you can't get to that property. The guy was just, brought a bunch of equipment out from Connecticut. Now he can't go through the property?
Like, and I talked to a guy, he, he was, he was very good about it. I told him, you know, it's a few days and it's gonna be gone.
Well, it's supposed to get freezing rain, and whether it turns into four inches or not, and we all get. I mean, it happens.
Yeah.
I mean, and then we're all gonna be out, because they can't get to the tree that fell onto that line beyond the burn.
Yeah.
So, I mean, what is the big deal? Him just going up there and moving that burn? And we're done. The road does not need to be maintained. The guy knows that we'd be, the way to get to his house, just, he closed the road all of a sudden.
Yeah.
Which is unacceptable. I don't want my house to burn down when that place gets on fire. Yes, I understand most of the fires in Mount Vernon are defensive fires, I understand that. But defensive means to be a little bit offensive on my property so we don't get burned up. In the origination, they can't get to it, they're just gonna let it burn. The fire chief, I, I spoke to him before it come out, he don't give a fuck if, if that place burns down or not. And I think that's. That he don't care. He goes, there's a lot of property we can't get to.
And he's right.
Well, when you burn up the road, yes, now there's another one added to the list. And what about the other property that, that the people bought down from Connecticut? The Brody property?
Yeah, there's four, there's four properties down there that are gonna be built.
Structures, sir. That is it. Pay farmers are gone down there. But the two structures, there's a camper there.
Yep.
Down on that other property. They just spent a bunch of money to have that refurbished.
Just because of building up on that road doesn't mean we have to fix that road.
I'm not asking you to fix, I just got done explaining it to you. It needs to be de-bermed, period.
It'll be gone by the end of the week.
Okay, Bob, if I lose fucking power, I'm coming over to your house with all my animals, okay? And you're gonna have to house me, because it could be your fault. Then that road is not closed. Where is the paperwork that shows me right now? It said the state of Maine officially closing that road. You don't have it.
We, we did, we closed that road.
Where is the paperwork that puts it to the state of Maine?
Now, but I have the paperwork.
Show it to me. Please, I'm right here.
I can mail it to you.
No, you can't. I want it shown right here. It's the electronic world, you could pull that right up on your phone, or you could print it somewhere.
No, I don't. I don't have it right now.
Well, problem, when did you close it?
Yeah, the first time it was closed was probably in twenty-seven, nineteen twenty-seven. That's when most roads were closed.
Well, when I first moved here, that road was supposedly closed. And you all gave me a building permit, and you all gave me an address. And they weren't gonna deliver mail, they weren't gonna plow it. And guess what? They did, because the road is not closed. He was down there directing Peter Querry and Company where to put the rip wrap. So that he spent time that maintaining the road. So how can you say it's closed?
That's not enough time to consider.
Oh, bullshit.
It's not enough time.
How is it? Are you kidding me?
We can't go to all these. Roads that are being built on that have been abandoned.
The MP has an easement to get to that hole.
Yeah.
And they can't get to it. So it's jeopardizing my life and everybody else down on that road.
You're not the only one in town that are on abandoned roads.
It's not an abandoned road. Show me the paperwork.
I can get you the paperwork.
I wanna see it right now.
I don't have it right now.
Where is it at?
Office at the house.
Please go home and get it.
I can't do that. We're in a meeting.
Okay, I'm waiting, and I'll go to home with you, and then it's, I'll save you thirty-two cents, and then I'll call you home. Okay, then you can give it to me. Is that fair enough?
If you want to.
Is that fair enough?
Yeah, I can do that.
Very well. I'm gonna sit right here and wait for you. So, yeah, it, it, the town's concerned, it doesn't matter if it burns either. Is it what it's on right?
It's not true.
Well, how the fire department can get to it if you burned it up?
Okay, we gotta stop right now, because we gotta continue this.
You asked me in here, I'm not done with this all, you think, because you haven't asked my question, answered my questions.
At some point, we have to close this portion of the meeting and go on to.
But you haven't answered my questions. You invited me in here, you should've finished your business first and then invited me here. So now this is my time, and I disagree with you.
We have to continue this meeting.
Why did you invite me in here?
You've been talking for five, ten minutes here. That's all we can give you.
That, the town did not care about somebody's places burning, just like the fire chief in State of Maine. I wanna hear from you, miss.
That's not correct. It's not that we don't care.
Well, why didn't you solve the problem, which was created by the, the road commission up? I'm just asking him to go, take a truck and go, just move it to the side.
So I think what I heard was the person beyond is okay.
It was fine.
Is fine.
What do you mean, he's fine?
He's fine. He said he's gonna walk to his place this weekend.
I told him I was gonna take care of this. Plus, you haven't answered about CMP getting to the pole.
That's not our problem.
So it's none of the taxpayer's problem down on the mount, on, on North Taylor Road, when we lose power because of their road commission, is that correct? Excuse me?
It's not.
Well, you just told me it was.
You're not listening to what I'm.
I'm damn well listening. I have two big ears for a reason.
Listen, we have to continue this meeting.
Why did you invite me in here and said it, when you had the time to decide whether I could come in here and speak to you or not? You had ample time. I was not banging on the door, trying to get in there to get your attention. You called me in here. I wanna know what the town value.
You either leave or we call the police.
Why?
Either leave or we call the police.
Call the police. I have a right, I'm a taxpayer.
No, you don't have a right to disturb, that's flagrant.
You called me in here, sir. I want it on tape, and I want a copy of this tape. Okay?
You can have a copy if you.
Very well.
And then you gotta go to YouTube to get it.
No, I'm gonna get with the police officer when he gets here. And we're gonna stand here until he gets here. And I'm gonna keep talking.
No, you're not.
Yes, I am. This is America. I earned my rights, a disabled veteran. I've earned my rights to be here.
I, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt for just a minute, because I'm the, I'm the treasurer, and the thing is that we have payroll and all that I have to do and submit.
I'm just inviting in here.
But, I'm limited to not a client, because I, I have a deadline, but I have to get this payroll submitted. And so that's why we need to continue with the meeting, get that done so I can pay people.
Well, miss, well, granted, it's the spokesperson of this group right here. He invited me in here, okay? He had all the time in the world to resolve what you have to do, what this has to do, what she has to do, what that person's listening, and that person's listening as well. I was invited in here. You did not say, okay, Mr. Carey, you have five minutes. Say what you gotta say.
That's implied, because we have an agenda.
You shouldn't have invited me in. That's my point. You guys invited me in here. You don't like to hear what I am saying to you. I'm trying to get Mount Vernon to put on tape that they don't care about a person's home burning up.
I didn't.
Because the fire department can't get to them.
I, I think you were probably invited to the public meeting, so you could share your.
I know.
Which you have.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And I'm not happy with, with the response. You're, I wanted it on tape, that you're willing to let somebody's house burn. And possibly jeopardize my home and jeopardize my life, because the central main power cannot get to a power pole. Because of Lee, what Lee Dunn has done. D O N E. And you have no, no response, other than you're gonna let that guy's house burn down.
Did you have a chance to, to read that letter yet?
I want to read that letter.
Yes, I do. Want to get that submitted tonight. Did you have any problems with it? Okay.
Hi, today, Carrie. I haven't looked at my notes today.
Well, actually, I have a hard copy, but.
Oh, great. Oh, that one, yes.
I'm often special to sign, because I've been told that's pretty much the piece.
Would you be open to sitting, as I am as well? And let them do the business?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, Bob, if the chairperson bothered by the need here.
So, so let's come and sit. You're fine during the meeting for us.
I'm stopping anybody from doing anything.
Well, have a seat.
No, I'm fine, same thing. I'll thank you, dear. Appreciate that. I just wanna hear from the town if they don't care. I just, and I'll be gone. I'll wait for the police. I mean, not a big deal. I just wanna hear from the town that they don't care about my home.
I have the letter from, I was like, I have one from the audit. Yeah.
I've been told it's pretty, pretty futile to do it, but I'm gonna show up instead night, and we just have to say something.
That's different than what I thought that you were talking about.
We found the other letter.
Counter tax letter.
Um, it probably is, but I thank you for sharing.
Oh.
You know, give you a point anyway, because. Yeah, that's a really big.
Yeah.
A really big leap.
Yes.
That's a huge percent. Um, yeah.
Diana is forty-four percent, and Rome is fifty-five percent. So that's, it's.
Did, have you gotten any response from them?
I have talked and talked and talked to different people on none of the budget committee, and they can't really justify it, except that, well, there's more use of the county emergency management. Well, that's true, but. Uh, you take that kind of money of us, from us, and we're not going to have any mitigation money left in town to do our things, so, you know.
Yeah.
It's a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And that's just, it's not justified. The personal income growth or LD one calculations doesn't apply to school or county taxes. But it really is a good yardstick to say, that is four point six nine percent, we got in there, but. So that's a good yardstick, because if the personal income growth in this area is four point six nine percent, hopefully you justify an increase of forty-seven percent. And that's when, when you say to their face, Mark, Wednesday. So. If any of you had to come.
You gonna go up and, and, and talk about this?
Yes.
What are you gonna do on?
Wednesday, Wednesday night is the public hearing in Augusta.
What time?
It's at six o'clock.
Okay, do you wanna write along?
Sure.
Meet you at your farm stand?
Sure.
They say what is addressed to nineteen?
One sixty-nine.
One sixty-nine, yeah, one sixty-nine, North Taylor.
What about last year? Um, to raise, place, sort of complaints and so on, and see what was going on.
Okay, sorry, I hope I wasn't rude here, but I just was trying to break.
Thanks for breaking the. The energy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, that's, okay.
Yeah, that's what we're recording. So, anyway, they started my roof.
Yes.
On Friday, and they left the, it said, it's gonna snow, I'll all be back tomorrow. They didn't come back. But they came back today, and they did. Yeah, yeah, they did. Which, can you imagine, they have.
They're amazing.
Well, the, the north side of the, I was worried about whether the snow's gonna slide off, because it's not that sloped in the north side. But it got snowed on, we tested it out. My poor dogs couldn't, the door, the snow was down. But the south side is the one that, it's a three-story, very, very steep roof. And they were up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Blining on it and shuffling it.
Yeah. He wouldn't do anything around it.
Okay, whoa, whoa, whoa. Was that all recorded?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was.
Great. Okay. You got to read that, anyway.
Oh, yeah, it's like, yeah, okay, we'll read this letter.
Okay, um, for the files.
Yeah, you can, if you, Carl's been very good about putting everything in with the orange.
This is the word file. On the. The December storm.
Thank you.
So, yeah, look, yeah, that was.
If you guys would sign it.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah.
I'll sign. Sign it, uh, your name and Thomas Sleckman, and then I'll send it off, and I'll sign it as treasure. And then I'll go there in person.
It's just so hard, and we're worrying about, you know, five hundred dollars for this, five hundred, you know. Like, we could cut to, I think they were cutting like two hundred dollars from someone, and then it's like.
They're out there to compete.
Oh, you know.
Okay, so we're meeting with FEMA on tomorrow, noon time. And I will give them all the paperwork for the December storm. And that right now is running about a hundred and twenty thousand, I think, something like that. So that's getting done.
Getting done.
Transfer station meeting, we had a transfer station meeting, the first one, and it went pretty good. I think I sent you the notes of the meeting.
I have some things to add to that.
To the transfer station meeting?
Well, sort of, yeah. Did you send those meetings for those minutes? And I'll.
She keeps it straight.
We appreciate that.
Sometimes that's like the old adage, though. Sometimes that's like the old man goes, I'm sorry.
No, it's good, that's, we appreciate you keeping us all.
I went to Georgia's building.
Georgia's, yeah.
Yeah, you know what the square footage is of that building?
It's a ten by eight.
Ten by eight, so it's eighty square feet.
Yeah.
Okay. That heater that you have in there is gonna make him very, very sick.
It's, the door is open when he's using it.
Doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, it cannot, it just is a dangerous and deadly situation. And, and no matter how you vent it, you're gonna be losing the heat that you're hoping to gain by using it. It's not a good situation and it's, it's.
What is it, event free?
It's event free. And it has a lot of built up gases that are heavy. And it produces a tremendous amount of moisture, which is gonna eat that building up. And I stood in there with him and, and I just said, oh, George, I'm so sorry, you can't do that to him, you can't use that kind of heat in that small space.
They've been using it in the other ones.
No, that's different, it's radiant. If you look at the different. Yes.
I'll check it out.
Yeah, because that's just really dangerous for him in that regardless of whether the door, because he can't keep that door open all the time. It's not gonna be feasible in weather conditions for him to keep that door open all the time, come on next winter. And I was very concerned for him.
Good thing that you took on.
What's that?
Yeah, good thing to check on.
Yep.
Don't want George to say.
Community Center Roof. Yeah, we're working, we're still working that one out with FEMA.
With FEMA.
Yep. They're supposed to be sending someone out to take a look at it too.
Okay, thanks.
Were pictures taken before the repairs were done?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that other quote from Sherry from the latest, so it was like.
Hundred and something.
Yeah.
They really wanted to do it.
Yeah.
Locks Corner.
I really want to do it.
Okay, Locks Corner, we talked with. People at. Not Senate, yeah, Senate of Colonists people. And they recommended that we go with, they call it a BRIC. Grant process, FEMA BRIC. B R I C. I don't know what that stands for. But it's, they said it's absolutely perfect for this situation where Locks Corner keeps flooding over. And this program is great for that. It comes up somewheres around October. But what we need to do first is we've got to get it engineered. Be ready, when this grant comes up, you've got to have everything done. The engineering's got to be done, you've got to be shovel ready. So what they will look for when it comes up is what projects are worthy of it. And what projects are ready to go right off immediately. So if we were to do the engineering and have it all done and ready to go, then when that, these grants come up, we'd be. You know, like first in line or close.
And what were the engineering costs?
About ten thousand.
And the grant would hopefully cover the engineering costs then?
Yes.
And can we use some of what we did for the previous grant or we need more, just more details or something?
So what I'm looking at is, can you give me a general ledger for the ARC funds? There's gotta be some money left in that, at least probably four thousand or so. And Charlie Veda said that they might be able to come up with some with that three nineteen grants if they do.
Oh, do like a match?
Yeah.
That would be really nice.
So what we've got to do is just, you know, find that money.
And how soon do we have to have this done?
You want, you want to get the engineering done like within the next two months, they said. So it's gonna be quick, the engineering won't take that long because the engineer is, has already done the preliminary.
Right.
To get ready for that other grant.
Yeah.
So he should be able to do it fairly quickly.
Unfortunately, we don't have the money to do it, so we're gonna have to have a special time meeting.
Right, and that's what I'm getting at right here. Special, sorry, right there.
I see, I have a few of his notes, so I got a little, I got a sneak peek.
But I don't know of anything else that needs a special time meeting.
Legal.
I didn't write that down, yes, legal. Yeah, absolutely. So there's two things right there.
Yeah, we should, yeah, if we are gonna be one, we should go through the budget, Carey, if you have anything top of mind, but we should just go through and see what lines are. If there's anything close to the top that we're worried about.
Yeah, I'm looking at the audit. There's a few things here and there, not, not gonna come up with much more than a thousand bucks, but I'm looking at anything I can do to get close to that ten thousand. But, you know, if you can get that for me, to get close, oh, the state triple maybe.
Do we maybe want to pause the recording here?
Perhaps, we are being, we are, we're live on YouTube.
So some excitement tonight. Hello? Um, I can't remember the guy's last name. Carrier? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Carrier.
Yeah.
Is this okay to be, that's what I was, should we?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So let me look around and see if I can find some money. You'll get me a ledger?
Yes.
Did I give you this?
Oh, yeah, could we use maybe, I mean. But some of the, like, matching grant line?
We paid this.
Did we pay that? Okay, maybe it was just an extra copy.
Fixing the trail in the town office.
Yeah.
I think so, yeah, we did three for him, I think that was one of them, the off-road.
The fire station here and the off-road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe I did that, no. I might have made it for you. I make a motion that we. Do a tree growth removal penalty for thirty-nine thousand eight seventy-four ninety-two. On tax map, R ten, a lot, sixty-nine. On Five Seaters Road.
Maybe decided to take it out?
Yeah.
All right.
Second?
Second.
Boat. Three zip. One more thing that goes in her pile.
So I had a question about that, just a curiosity, when somebody discontinues tree growth and they're penalized, does that fall to the town, the town gets that funds, those funds back?
Yep, and then it gets voted, I'm meaning to reduce taxes.
Well, that's always a good one.
Okay, three quick ones. Bulk mail. How are you doing on that?
No, I have, to be honest with you, I have not had time the last two weeks during my breaks to get that taken care of and call that last phone number that I hopefully have, but you know what, I will give it a concerted effort tomorrow morning and email you back.
The owl at the library.
It's right here.
Okay, where do you keep it?
At the library.
Is it secured?
Well, it's, everything is in here and it's in that cubby on the second floor.
Okay.
And it seems like they had gone in there and left it alone and left it right where I put it, and I have a little owl on there that I have to tell about Vernon in there, it's not locked, but other committees have access to it.
Okay. KV Cog. Jessie Seager. I talked with her about joining and the benefits of joining. And I asked if she would make a presentation. So would you like it at the budget meeting or at the next one?
Oh, I mean, budget, maybe if she, if she's willing, because I think that we're all interested in.
Is that what you're saying?
Sad if she's free, otherwise we could schedule, you know, around her. If, you know.
Yep.
That's short notice, I feel like, but. If that time doesn't work, we can find a different time, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Are you guys having your budget in that Easter weekend?
Yes.
No rest for the budget committee.
This is the agreement. To stay with the PSAT at Andes Gorgon.
Oh, yeah, we were wondering about that at the last part of the meeting, okay.
This is the bill.
Thank you.
And then the contract. Make a motion to stay with Andes Gorgon. PSAP. For the year, June, July first.
Second, and then I have to say.
For the next calendar year, uh, year, yeah.
I haven't read that contract yet, is it the same as, anything changed from our current year to this one, or is it all the same?
So the total year is fifteen four?
Yep. They base it on four fifty, put all in fifty cents for a population of seventeen twenty-one.
Make sure I get a coffee. I'm a coffee girl.
Do we need to, did we actually vote, or did we just motion and?
I did make a motion in a second and I do not have to vote.
Okay, we just center both, okay, I'll move, I will work on that. I got a list of I'll have that ready for next meeting. A list of community sent board of trustees, and I'll add them to our
Oh, for our insurance renewal.
Yep. And I'll put down the others.
Right, right, right. We have all the other names we need for that.
For all the other committees.
Yeah, yeah.
Sean Olson is going through and calling people on a team place to re-verify.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Is he the person that would write the letter for the town report?
Yes.
Okay.
Although I think it was delegated to Carol for, but he should know about it, so. If you go back to PSAP for minutes, it said, it's based on population of seventeen twenty-one, four dollars and something per person?
Four fifty.
Four dollars and fifty cents?
Nope, four fifty.
But, okay, four fifty times seventeen twenty-one. This is a lot less than fourteen, fifteen thousand four hundred.
That is true.
Four dollars fifty cents comes out to seven, uh, seven thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents.
That's for happy year.
Happy year.
Okay, that's an odd way to calculate it. But the fully areas, the fifteen four.
So clearly nine dollars per year.
It sounds better, it sounds better to say four, thank you.
Okay, this came up last week. Building inspector. Do we have a building inspector? What the, does the building inspector do all this stuff? When Bill was hired, were you here?
No, before my time, before all of our times.
I'll have to ask Paul. You remember? No?
About what?
Building inspector. Bill must have been hired as a CEO slash building inspector.
Probably.
Because those are two distinct things and the ordinance specifically delegates building inspector to do certain things.
Oh.
To enforce them, to do certain things.
Aha.
So I gotta call Paul.
Do we have the original contract maybe?
I was gonna say, don't leave out the original, it should be in his file.
I don't know.
Good question. This person I'll find.
I have, oh, nine seventy-four.
I'm cringing.
It's gotta be there someplace.
Okay, I'll put that on my radar.
Okay, LD two thousand three public hearing will be April twenty-fourth. You're working on the ads, but that.
I've already sent them in, I'm just waiting for the court to come back for the two days.
Thank you.
In the, what time is it? At seven?
I did look for a job description for either the CEO or the building inspector and I can see him amongst our job descriptions. It would have been nice, but it's pretty well defined in like ordinances anyway. People close the back of it and lists all the billing inspector ones. It's interesting because we don't invoke the bulk of codes, which I have a billing codes. But billing inspector does have to do a bunch of things.
Don't they have to follow me again?
No, we're under two thousand.
We're under two thousand.
Five thousand.
Is it, it's five, right?
Five, I think.
That's the one thing I wanted to keep in mind, the LD two thousand three to pay the KV cog, we, we have the state money.
Yeah.
So we can use that, I think, to reprint ordinances.
Yes.
So.
And to pay for, um,
Yes.
Pay for ads in the news.
Yes, absolutely.
So make sure when we're doing any of these things, flag it to me, yes, for LD two thousand three use, or rewrite or whatever.
Uh, let's see, on April twenty-fourth at between six and eight P M at the community center.
Good. Solar versus community center seller. So we're going uh, doing the repair work in the community center seller uh, for the resilience project, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Mostly because there were already numbers available and the grant deadline is soon.
So on the solar, we can go with a, um, not the brick. But there's another grant program out there and I will email it to you, okay?
Yeah, I don't know if it's the same one, we're still live, I just, I'm disconnecting, so.
What do you think for solar for the community?
No, well, no, we're looking at solar here, the transfer station.
And the fire department.
And the fire department.
Okay, okay.
So grants, those are pretty easy ones to get and I'll find, I'll find that for you.
What about companies to do that?
Uh, we already have one.
We, we haven't, I, I think we probably need to do.
A bit. Yeah.
I can provide another company for you to inquire about.
Sundogs.
I definitely have to give you a different one.
Okay.
Oh, do I have your phone number? Straight out.
It's straight out unless they feel like it doesn't fall directly in one of the things and then it's like five, five percent.
Because we don't.
I'll give it to you after the meeting.
We don't have that. Yeah, make sure we. There's a company out of Portland. And they're, they're well-equipped and well-funded and well-staffed with all of their engineering and installation and so they're the best company I've found so far.
Is that Sam's or Perkins?
No, it's, um, Everright. And I'm, I'm, I'm working with them right now, I'm doing that on private, so. They do big things, too.
Um, I'm gonna forward, I don't know if it's the same grant that you're mentioning, Bob, but I'm gonna forward this email from Carol's about this main community energy redevelopment program. Um, and he met with them recently and thought it could be a good fit for solar. The solar project, it says technical assistance to develop the project and help seek funding. Anyway, I'll forward.
Okay. How are we doing?
That was a nice little move.
The pictures that I showed you for Bev Olson.
Yes.
Which ones did you like?
I like the fire department one.
Fire department.
Fire department's good.
Okay.
Send me a pic.
I will send you the pic.
We're ready to rock.
Yay.
And just while we're on that, I am waiting for the community partnership letter and the dam committee letter and the aging in place, and that's all that I'm waiting.
Oh, I was gonna ask if we needed to test or you just those, just those three? That's awesome.
And then I just see if I'm waiting for the final audit and it's done. I will, obviously, except for warrants, but.
Yeah, but, yeah.
That way you guys can look at it and you have time, it's not rushed.
Not, yeah, not trying to edit the last second possible, um.
Did you reach out to Jane and ask her to do that, or? Or that she can see?
I, I have, I just literally looked it up just before our meeting, so those were the only ones that I needed. Perfect.
That's awesome.
Yeah, make it great.
Yay.
Plus you got all the ref letters in, uh, new Ben Gold, Ollie, Ramels. Um, I'm waiting for Collins, is she on that, or is it? I think it's Collins, yeah. And then that's the only letter I'm waiting for that, and we're good.
Woohoo.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Bits went out for snowplow and sending of elm rows. Keep your fingers crossed.
What did we put of the?
April twenty-second.
At seven?
Yep.
Okay.
Keep your fingers.
Fingers crossed, I feel.
What's that?
Is Lee putting out a?
Several of the boys. Okay, um, another thing that came up. I don't know if you guys were in on that. Bill brought up the fact that the shoreline portion of the land use ordinance got blended into our land use shoreline portion. And he reached he mentioned that because of that maybe the, um, state, when they reviewed it may have missed a lot of things. So our ordinance may not be correct.
Uncompliant.
Incompliant, that's what I was thinking of. Okay. So, I didn't like that. I called Colin Black.
Yeah. Reviewer of ordinances, right?
He's the head man.
Yeah.
I called him up. He said, that is not correct. He uses, he reviews all, the, the whole thing. It, it's not just the shoreline, he'll, he'll review the whole thing. He said, in fact, if you wanna send me it out again and I'll look the whole thing through.
Awesome.
I said, I'm not sure if they're doing anything right now that might affect the shoreline portion. So I, I held off, I said, I'll send it to you and as soon as we figure out what's being changed. And then we'll send it into you and you can look at it.
Yeah.
So as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's.
Yeah, he said, yeah, I saw you did, he did copy us on that.
Okay.
His response, and I felt I felt good about his response, it seemed. It was very helpful.
Once, once you get that, which one is your main land use ordinance approved by DEP, then the only thing that you need to send him are the snippets that we've put in the warrant for them to approve that. And then you don't, he doesn't have to go through that. And it's only when, if you know a shoreline, something's gonna change that's already going to affect something that's in there, then you just instead of sending, once you've got a good one, just send him what we're changing and then he doesn't need that whole thing every year.
Yep.
Makes it easier on him, because those are mama, really, really.
Yeah, he said in his email back that many towns are set up that way.
Yeah, it's very common, so it's not like we're doing anything different.
Yeah.
And he, he was confident in our.
Yeah.
I was so that puts the bank, that was the biggest thing that came out of that, those meetings, was his non-confident in being on that shoreline, and he shouldn't be, so. Uh, last thing I have, and I think I gave this to you, right, those copies of the these are the final letters from the state approving our May disaster funds. So hopefully, we should start seeing those checks. Should be, should be two, two checks. Then we can work on what we're gonna do with them.
And if you need to reference them, um, they're either in that, the second file count, very first file. Just me, and I, and I've got the booklet and five big numbers, five or four, so.
Thank you.
Should be easy to find if you need it.
And that's all I got.
That is awesome news about the, the contract. Um, I had a little list, but I think we've talked about everything in it. In your list. Um, except, should we, oh, sorry, nevermind, I was gonna say, we should officially sign our audit letter as part of the meeting, but maybe we don't need to.
And you're working with Harold?
Yes, on the grant.
I'm staying up with that.
Okay.
Is that a pretty promising for being done this week?
I think so. I think there's an email in my inbox right now, like I'm still, so we'll see.
See, that's up to fifty thousand, so whatever you can push out.
Yeah, I think we're trying to like
Yeah.
Put, bundle as much as
Yeah.
we can connect as possible in there.
Yep.
That's the resiliency.
Yeah.
Community center.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
But that would get the, the billing shored up.
Yeah.
Nicely.
Yeah, that'd be beautiful.
Yep.
That's underway. We talked briefly. We were talking about the grant in the meeting. We wanted to keep applying for these in the town as the funding pools keep opening back up.
Yep.
If we should make that committee, it's been working on it, an official little committee to keep working on it.
Yep. Once a year, is it?
I think it's been once, sometimes twice, and I don't know, I don't know if they know what their plan is for later in twenty twenty-fourth. They might be waiting to hear from state appropriations, but
Yep.
Who knows? So that's something to consider too, if it makes sense to have it as a whole
Yep.
group to keep, keep going. But yeah, should go in, fingers crossed.
Anything else?
I think everything else on my list we talked about earlier.
Carl?
I don't have anything.
I've got a check, we, we did have Lynn Martin come and do a spot check. With the transfer station, looked at this building and the fire station, um, I'll be going through those things with, with them. Um, and I wanted to go back for the last one to make sure everything there was done. But other than that, it was pretty good.
I have a question.
Yep.
Did George have power at his old shed?
No.
Okay, is there any possibility of getting any kind of power to him?
The only power is up well, there is, I read that compacted, but there's power, the only one ten is up at the shed. The, the share shack.
I can, I can donate a one hundred KW solar panel that would run some twelve volt lighting in that shed, if you could get somebody that could do that wiring.
In the shed, his little shed?
Yep. I'll just give him a little, a little, you know, because twelve volt LED right now is enough to blind you.
Yeah.
But, you know, I ran, I have a couple of deep cell batteries and I have the KW, you know, the hundred kilo panel that I could donate.
Yeah.
Um, and it would just give him the opportunity to have a little bit of light in there.
Yeah. Okay.
I just won't, you know, I don't do that wiring thing.
So you're donating the batteries too?
Yeah, yeah.
You're upgrading your system, huh?
Well, sort of, I'm shedding the small stuff. Making room for the bigger stuff. Yeah, the batteries that are about the size of a radiator. And I did think about the four dump. And I did think about the Ford dump, they could have used that snow blower.
Oh, I know.
Oh, geez, I thought about that, but I'll get that in the works as soon as I can.
She was all alone too.
Oh, my goodness. Well, we were fortunate, I hear, that we actually had the quality of the snow that we did in this area, because my sister lives in Russell, and they had eight inches of sleet and she couldn't move it. And, and my friend in Belgrade had, you know, ten inches of snow and then three inches of sleet on top of that with more snow. You know, so we were very fortunate that we got the quality that we did at least, you know?
Yeah, very lucky, much ice here and a lot of.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
Glad to have just this.
Like, two feet of snow.
So much.
Well, I couldn't believe it. I stepped out and it was above my knees, I had to wade through it.
I had to go to Farmington today and, you know, you can't, you know, the usual, like, still closed. Then I went like around, you know, like by Mount Plumb, and that whole road just walked off there, some terrible accident. I got a sound and it was like, all blocked, I was like.
It's a long trip.
I went like through Chesterville and I was like, I'm gonna be late, not I do.
Okay, anything else? I move, we adjourn at eight fifteen. Free zip.
They have the signed audit thing, so I can scan that.
Oh, yeah, uh, yes, thank you, Mark.
Yeah.
Thank you all for signing that.